I want to call the July 23rd, 2012 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. If you will stand with me for the prayer and the pledge, please. Heavenly Father, hallowed be thy name. Thank you, God, for the opportunity that we have to participate in your plan for us. Father, be with this body as we deliberate and make decisions that are in the best interest of all Rutherford County citizens. Bless this county, bless this state, and God bless America. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Call roll, gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Bowlen.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Bott. Vincent Windrow. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
I think we got a call from Steve Sandlin this morning. I think his son has an emergency and they're on their way to the emergency room. So you guys be in special thought and prayers for Steve's family, if you would, please. At this time, we'll call on Vice Chair Craig Lynch to read and approve the minutes of our June 25th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we do approve those minutes.
Thank you, Craig. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Items deferred or withdrawn?
No, sir. Nothing withdrawn or deferred.
Okay. Item number six, bond plat extensions, Martha's Haven at Barfield, letter of credit extension for one year. Can we take both of these?
Yes, sir. They're both similar, the action for extension because of the, due to the economic situation, they've not sold enough houses to get them paved yet, so we recommend that they be approved.
Item number B is Travis Estates, Section 1 and 2, letter of credit extension for one year. You've heard the explanation, any other discussion?
Motion to approve, Bob.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, submitted for preliminary approval, A Ridgecide subdivision, formerly Malibu Estates, 12-1002, 118 lots on approximately 16, 69 acres, zoned R15, located along Barfield Crescent Road, Jones Construction Company developer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this piece of property is located along Barfield Crescent Road. Planning Commissioners, after looking at the subdivision, may recognize the layout. This is the former Malibu Estates subdivision that was originally considered by the Planning Commission back in 2006. Although the layout is substantially the same as it was back when it was known as Malibu subdivision, there are some changes that are going to need to be made to conform to the stormwater regulations that are in effect now. And with that, I'll turn it over to our engineer, Mr. Del Corbett.
As Mr. Demossi said, we've had some detention areas to comply with the stormwater regs. They are still required to put a box cover on the Crescent Lane and Stones River to handle the additional water. This was based on a study that was done by Jamie James at the time we did this, so they could handle the water coming out of there. I have a, an email that was sent from CUD that they want to make sure, and I've talked to Mr. Jones, the developer about this, and they knew about it ahead of time. Says, "In order for this property to have step surface, water service, and fire protection, 12-inch water main that was started would have to be completed and step system rehabilitated." Mr. Jones has met with CUD beforehand. He's agreed, he was aware of this requirement, and just wanted to make sure that, you know, that they've got to do some additional work. As a result of changes and discussions we've had with the engineer, this subdivision meets our requirements, Mr. Chairman, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Discussion?
The Crescent Road, is that the box covert that was causing such trouble?
Yeah, the-
That the neighbors were worried about?
Yeah, the covert under there was undersized, or it is undersized at this point in time. And this will help, but we haven't, they also have to accommodate the one at Stones River, otherwise you'll have a backup there, so they, the plans for them to replace both of those with box covets to get the water on down to the river.
And I remember there was extensive conversations, even a lawsuit about this, if I'm not mistaken, last time around. And there was, was the box covert the only thing off-site? I remember there was talk about drainage down. We've still got the same exact package in place we had before as far as downstream drainage.
That's correct.
Okay. And Mr. Jones is okay with whatever off-site work he has to do and things like that?
Yes.
Take your time.
Motion to approve on including staff comments. Second?
Thank you, Richie. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Item eight, submitted for site plan approval. Item A, Middle Point Landfill Leachate Pretreatment Plant, 12-3010, total new construction of approximately 1,308 square feet on 459 acres, zoned I-4, located at 750 East Jefferson Pike, BFI Waste Systems of Tennessee LLC applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located at the Middle Point landfill off East Jefferson Pike. The applicant proposes to add, add on to the pretreatment facility that's on the property to handle leachate before it's sent to the Murphy'sboro Water and Sewer Department's sewer station. Basically, it consists of adding a dewatering building and a 50,000 gallon storage tank. It's pretty much just, again, just adding on to the processing that they currently do already. I do believe there's a representative here from CEC Engineering that handled the work here that can answer any more specific questions. But with that, we've reviewed the site plan. Everything appears to be in good order with it, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
It's the, who's here?
A gentleman with CEC. Jeff Williams is his name.
Just come forward, please. State your name.
Jeff Williams with Civil and Environmental Consultants.
Thank you, Jeff. Tell us what you want to do.
But as Mr. Demossi said, there's an existing pretreatment facility there that's been pretreating leachate for ammonia before we sent it to the Murphy'sboro Treatment Plant. It turns out that we're sending too many solids in the leachate, so we propose this facility to reduce the solids loading on Murphy'sboro Treatment Plant. There's a small building to house the equipment and a sludge storage tank.
Improve the process.
I'm sorry?
Improve the process.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Williams?
Meet everything, all of course.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
Motion to approve and second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Item B, Subway Restaurant, item 12-3011, total new construction of 2,530 square feet on 2.9 acres, zoned services, with a conditional use permit for a convenience market and restaurant located at 5854 Shelbyville Highway, Charlie and Greg Patel Developers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located on the west side of Shelbyville Pike, right near the intersection of Ellis Drive, which is across the street from the property. Planning Commissioner, you may recall that the site plan was actually reviewed by you at the March 26th meeting. Since that time, they've revised the layout and changed design engineers, so that's why it's being brought back before you today. Just a couple of things on this. First of all, you see that they have the property divided out into Lots 1 and 2. They will have to have a subdivision plat in order to create that. There's also some issues with the, with the septic area that they may have to possibly grant waivers for regarding the existing house and then the, where they'll be draining possibly onto Lot 2, as well as the proposed building that they're wanting to construct. There's also an issue with the landscaping plan. I don't think it's anything that should hold up approval if that's what you decide to do. But on the north side of the property, if you go to page 5 of 8, on that north side, there is required to be a type 2 buffer. They are showing a significant amount of planning, but there's not enough of space in between where the parking area is and the property line. Now, that could be taken care of as simply as just putting a privacy fence and showing that on the site plan, but at this time, that does not conform to our requirements. So with that, everything else really appears to be in good order with it. I will turn it over to Mr. Corbett. I think he has some discussion about the drainage of the property that he'd like to discuss.
Yeah, there's a couple of things I wanted to discuss with you. The drainage meets our requirements. However, they're going to, on page 4 of 8, right in front of the store there, they're going to put what's called an AquaShield Stormwater Treatment System. And you have a pamphlet on this. And the reason I included this is because we are starting to get in some more requirements for stormwater, which are going to require these types of devices. This is not for your approval, really, it's for your information. Basically, I had, I put this in front of us, this is a, an example of what the industry's doing. These things are used throughout Davidson County, some of the surrounding counties. Basically, this is a chamber, the water goes through, we have to treat the first inch of water coming off the site. And so the water will circulate through this, the particulates will be dropped out in there, and then they will, water will, the clean water will be discharged out. So, like I say, we're going to start seeing these types of things. These are going to require long-term maintenance. You also have in front of you a long-term maintenance agreement, which in the past we haven't required. This is going to be required to be signed at the pre-con stage, because these, these aqua squirrels, when you get 30 inches of particulate in them, you have to clean them out. Well, most of the particulate we'll get will be during the construction phase, and they're going to put this in first. And so they, we need this stormwater agreement signed. And we're also going to start doing this on our subdivision plots, where they'll have to agree to maintain their detention areas and those types of things throughout the process. There's, there's a couple of things, reason we're doing this. One is it's good practice to do this, and if we don't maintain these things properly, they will fail before the project actually gets started. The other is it's actually a requirement from the state now that this be put into our process and our ordinance. So we're following both of those to do that. We've taken this agreement. We got it from Metro and changed the names and stuff and worked on it, sent it over to Josh. He's looked at it, made comments, which we've made changes to make sure we've got all the best stuff, particular stuff taken care of.
Dale, I haven't read it yet, but what's the or else if they don't do it, if they don't maintain it?
Well, we, and we're working on our ordinance to take care of some of the enforcement part now. If we can't get them to do it, we'll be working through David's Department, Coast Department, issue them a letter. If necessary, we go in and clean it, and then we charge them the cost of doing that.
So will checking them become part of a routine inspection process?
It will become part of our inspection that we do. After it's completed, the first year, you, you check it every six months. If it looks like it's working properly, then you do a yearly inspection, but it will be on our list of things to check. It's up to the, it will be assigned to the store owner, the subway manager, to inspect the facility itself and clean it out.
Dale, is this, is this where the water goes into the detention pond? It goes through this first? Is that what you said?
No, the water will actually circulate through the detention pond area. It comes in and goes through this before it leaves the site.
Okay, so on the, on page number four, where are we?
Yeah, the water will come out of detention pond, you'll see it, there's a pipe there. It says 691, there's a pipe. That pipe goes down to 692, goes over to, that's the number one, it goes over to number two there, and then goes through the, the little treater at where C is. Then it comes out of there and be discharged.
So this mechanism is above ground or in a berm, or so it's not buried?
It's buried. It will be buried. The pipe itself is buried, so it'll come out, it'll be buried, but the exit will come out, the top. When it, as it goes, circulates, and it reaches a certain level, well, it'll drop the particulates in it, but the water will come out. It just works basically like a septic thing. And these things are used quite a bit, and they are made locally here.
So it just catches the sediment and somebody has to come pump that out?
Right.
Or clean a filter or some type, type thing like that?
And if it were to get clogged up with trash or whatever, it's responsibility for them to clean it out to make sure it's properly cleaned.
What size, what size pipes going into it? To this one? Well, they'd be different sizes, right?
It's different sizes, depending on the flow of the, of the site itself. And these are all 12-inch, those 12-inch pipes.
12-inch.
So when we have these in subdivisions in the future, we'll have to have a homeowner association with every subdivision at least has one of these.
That's correct.
Because somebody's got to be held responsible for it 20 years down the road.
That's correct.
Or two weeks down the road when it must have been.
Well, I mean, the developer's still around for a while, but-
Yeah, the developer will sign this, the developer will sign this initially as being responsible, clean it out, and once he turns, the homeowner association to be an active or turns it over to them, he then, he can transfer this to the homeowner association. But they still will be responsible for maintaining the stormwater structure, be it a, be it one of these, or be it a Stormscepter 3000, or be it whatever the industry is, is producing at that time to handle our load that we're putting out there.
Is this the first we've seen, right?
This is the first one we've seen. I wanted to, this is the reason I'm giving you a copy of this, so somebody says a thing. It's more for informational purposes. It'll become part of our process of approval, where we will do this internally.
What is the- Explain to me again the purpose of the system. I'm, I'm just trying to understand, and if there's-
We, we're going to be required to treat, if you will, the first one inch of rain or water that goes through these facilities.
Okay.
And that, by treating almost all of it is particular, the little particles of sand. So you want to get those out of the water. And this is a methodology when you have a tight facility to do it like this. Another way to do it, if you look at Malibu, there's a, a new pond or a new detention area that's put on there, and it's-
If it were a larger parcel of land, they wouldn't need this?
Probably not.
The land would take care of it?
Right.
Okay.
What is the frequency to clean these things out? I mean, how long, how often?
What you do is you measure it basically with a stick, and once you get 30 inches of sediment in there, it's supposed to be cleaned out at that point. And you can clean it out, it's not that difficult. There's a top you clean up basically with shovel. It's not, it's not something that, I mean, you can get it out pretty easy, pump it out.
So how, how long will it take 30 inches of-
Well, we anticipate during construction, then that may happen pretty quick, because you're going to have a lot of surface area that's exposed, and so you'll, if it rains, you'll wash out a lot. But once everything is stabilized with grass and stuff, it may take several years for it to get to that point. But you have to inspect it every year, and you have to prove, there's a form you fill out to prove that you inspected it. And our inspector then inspects yours, to make sure that you're doing the work.
So is there a cost in this inspection?
Well, it's not a cost to us, because we have a normal inspection list. It's, our office is required to inspect all of these facilities, and so it would be just another stop for our inspector to make-
Go by and check them.
On this inspection. So-
Fair cost to the landowner?
Well, after the initial installation, all that you mean, I would assume, and I'm making assumptions, because I don't know how they're going to operate the store, that somebody in that store will be assigned a responsibility, maybe the manager or whatever. You don't, this doesn't require an engineer to go out and inspect, but they would basically measure the depth of the silt and then clean it out.
But there won't be, but there wouldn't be a codes fee, because you said we have to check them annually. There's not a fee issued from codes for us to go and do the inspection. What's the investment on a system like this? I'm just curious what the additional cost is to that developer. Do you have any idea?
I, that I don't know. I, I didn't ask. It makes, something they're going to do, so to me, it's part of their cost of-
I'm just curious, with it being new, what the additional cost is?
I don't know that.
No question.
Probably $4,000 to $5,000 for this, this small unit.
What about the maintenance?
Come up to the microphone.
Doug Jenkins with SCCE Engineering. As Dale said, depending on how much material was down in the unit, you know, as far as your cost to, to maintain it, I mean, it could be as easy as just getting in there with a shovel and digging it out, and, and then disposing of that grit, or you could have a, a vacuum truck come out. If you did something like that, it'd be quite a bit more, but-
So where will it sit, where will this particular unit sit? Will it sit close to the pavement, so to easily access it, or?
Yes, it's in the parking lot.
Okay, okay.
It'll look just like a sewer manhole, all you're going to see is a cast iron top sitting there that-
Okay.
You can pull the top off to, to get down into it, to access it.
Doug, who makes the call here whether it needs it or does? Have you got a formula whether a piece of property needs this or does not need this?
What we tell them is they have to meet the regulations of treating. Now, again, it's their choice whether to use, whatever they bring into us, we look at the, has it been used before, and its history, and this kind of stuff. Like this one has a, a good history, because it's used a lot locally. If it's a larger facility, instead of putting one of these, they may put a detention area in there. So it's entirely up to the engineer and the developer as to how they want to handle the requirements to meet, you know, what we have to do under the law. And in this particular case, because this is the first time, and because you may hear it, and we will probably see more of these types of products, I just want to make you aware of it.
Well, he's using the detention area plus this right here, is that right?
Actually, we are, yeah. This detention pond for the, that, that first flush runoff was designed for a 20-hour, somewhere right in that range, release of the water, so you're going to get a lot of it to settle out within the pond. And then what does get out would be treated by the aqua squirrels.
Okay, when it goes into this, and the line is underground, is it, is it like a septic line with holes in it, goes into that line, then goes into this?
No, it's all closed pipe, where it gets into that unit, and then the unit itself takes care of all the, all the grit.
It's sitting where it comes out of the detention pond, is that right?
No, it's out in front.
It's out, if you look in front, under, there's a big C in the front of the, on page 4.
Where's the inlet? Where's the water going to get in that pipe? Going to this?
Well, from the detention pond, and then we've also got another inlet in front of the building that catches part of the flow. The entire site doesn't flow to the pond, so the front of the building would get to that inlet and then get in a pipe.
I'm worried about the, what's in the detention pond then. The detention pond won't go through this?
Yes.
It will, yeah. Everything will end up going through it.
You got this little hole right here.
I don't see the second one.
Where's the second? Big?
We found, we found the one in the front.
We have the one in front of the building.
Yes, labeled number one.
See, we got that one right there.
The C is there. I'm with you, I don't see the inlet.
All the design work that you do in the future will include this?
Possibly, unless we can get it all done within the pond and, and some other features, but-
Small lots will probably include this.
Yeah, you just don't have room to do anything else, so.
This, while you're up there, this state requirement, Dale, that you mentioned, effective when?
Well, it will be effective probably, you know, well, they said 18 months, but that was like eight or nine months ago, and so they're going to go ahead and put this in and start with.
This, this is all really the result of the federal-
That's correct.
-water quality that's come down the P. Where two drops of water, once they've come together, they come under regulation of the federal government.
That's right.
In other words, two drops of water fall off of your house, they belong to the federal government.
Well, yeah, and different states treat that separately. In Oregon, they, they tried the rain barrels, and they were taken to court, and they weren't allowed to do that, because they were controlling the water, so, I mean, there's different ways to treat the water you're talking about.
But like you said, this is just one system, that we'll be seeing more like this.
This has no moving parts, and so there's no mechanical parts. It's all just designed with the flow of the water and stuff.
What, what happens if it fails? In other words, if it, I seen in the picture, or the information we've got here, one of them had a, shows Coke bottles and stuff like that. What if somebody drops a bag of trash down in there, and this one's just forgetting, you know, we, it gets dropped off a radar, we, we're not expecting it.
No, we will, we will continue. This would always be on our inspection list.
I, I understand.
And so, well, the responsibility in a failure is to the, the shop owner.
But, but I mean, if it fails, does it back the water up?
Yes, it would. It would. I mean, if, if you clog it for, you know, with trash, or somehow, it's going to back the water up.
Dale, when they take out this settlement, and I know it's got to go somewhere, where is it taken to?
Well, this is not considered hazards, and it's just considered dirt, so they basically could spread it on their site, or-
So it could be scattered somewhere?
Could be scattered somewhere else.
You got building A, building B, correct?
Yes.
Sub goes in, which side?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Or does it take, or does it take it all? Does sub going to take?
I think they're just in one side of it.
Yeah, our understanding is that the subway will be on one side, there'll be a, a separate suite there for another business. Now, their conditional use permit only allows them restaurants or a convenience market, so they could have another small restaurant there, possibly. They did provide enough parking based on the square footage, so that they'll have to watch that as far as the seating's concerned. But they're, they're kind of limited in what they, what they can do currently.
Have these two lots always been split this way? I seem to remember them being cut more or less equally, and-
Well, I think at one point, and, and right now, it's just one lot. You know, they're, they're going to have to create this as a subdivision plat, so, but yeah, I think at one point, there, there may have been a little more room on one or the other. I don't think it was a whole lot more, just because you see the house where it is.
I remember that before, I thought it said house to be removed. Are they intending to leave the house there at this point in time?
At this point, they do, right. You know, I-
Scoot it over and salvage the house for a while.
Right, you remember when was this, when this first was considered by the Planning Commission as a rezoning application? The plan was to have a restaurant and then have a gas station convenience market. Of course, there was some concern about that from some of the surrounding neighbors, and at this point, all they're really concerned with is just doing the restaurant. They've been working with the, the folks across the street, so.
How do we, how do we stand on turning lanes? What was our final?
Well, I think our final determination there was pretty much, if TDOT would require something like that, then they would put it in. So it wasn't a requirement that was made by either the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners. We're just going to leave it up to TDOT to make that determination, as I recall.
Sandwich shop wasn't going to create but a fraction of the traffic that a convenience market would.
Right.
Mike brought up a good point last, our last meeting, with the, one we had last Kansas. Building A comes in, builds something somewhere, building B builds across from it, or beside of it, and here comes building C. Then we say, looks like we might need a turning lane. Is A and B's there, C, they're going to be burdened with the whole turning lane. Do we have any way that makes everybody involved in the turning lane? Is there any legal recourse? Is there any thing we can put in our regs where A and B and C just happen to be the, he happened to be the tortoise, and he was the last one there, but he's going to pay for the whole turning lane?
Well, we're looking at putting some information, or, or some requirements in our new regulations, our zoning and our subdivision regulations about traffic studies and all that, that I think will, will help with that. I mean, currently, we really don't have anything that would answer that question.
Or C couldn't come back on A and B and-
I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, I mean, even, well, under the new regulations, I'm not even sure they could do that, so. If they could just come back on them like that.
There's no way for us to try to anticipate growth in a particular area and go ahead
There's no way for us to try to anticipate growth in a particular area, and go ahead and have these developers escrow money as we go?
I mean, I, I think there's, I mean, there are probably methods to do that. You know, I think that's something, as we're going through the subdivision regulations, especially with, um, uh, larger subdivisions, I think that's something to, to consider, but currently...
It seems like we're having a lot more discussion around commercial development with turn lanes than we have been with subdivisions. Of course, we're just seeing a lot more commercial development right now, anyway.
Right.
But, so is there some way to factor that into commercial development, too?
I mean, I think so. Uh, again, just off the top of my head, um, not being, not, not, not coming to be prepared to answer that question, I apologize, but, uh, you know, I, I think a lot of it just goes back to looking at the, uh, the whole, I mean, there are methods out there, you know, that, just a quick answer to that. Just off the top of my head, what they are, I mean, they're, some of them can get pretty complex. I don't know if Mr. Corbin, if you have any comments you wanna make on that, I heard, but...
Well, a lot of times, it'll, it'll do with, um, determining, that will do with the actual trips that you're generating. I'm sitting here thinking, if you, if the other side turned into a, a, you know, like, we're talking a gasoline station and stuff, your trip generation's gonna be a lot more than your subway. I, I don't, it'd be, unless you assume, make an assumption, and I don't know how valid this, that every business is gonna generate a third or a fourth, and then you go with that percentage, it would be extremely difficult to assign a value. Let's say the turn lane costs a hundred thousand dollars, I'm, I'm just picking a number out of... So, if they were all a third, then they'd all put in, you know, thirty-three thousand, whatever it is. If, if they were similar businesses, if you wanna equate them, but let's say that, uh, B generates a hundred trips a day, and A's, uh, two hundred, and then the other one is, you know, seven hundred, which you don't know, cause you don't know what's going in there ahead of time. Your escrow, you'd have thirty percent going into that third one, and if it generates ten, ten percent again, I mean, I reckon soon eventually, if you fill it all up, you can get this stuff, but it would, it'd be kinda hard to do it.
I think it's worth spending some time trying to put together a formula, only because having some contribution from those developers, even if we get the number off, and there's not enough, at least there's something there, but right now, there's nothing. And then, as we begin to develop, you know, our own transportation plan, and begin to work that, and we see that where there's areas of growth, then all of a sudden, that expense falls entirely on the county, and, you know, we already know there's not enough tax money there for us to, you know, build those roads, so, I'm just saying, seems like there oughta be some way to cost share this with those developers.
Well, my suggestion would, let us do a little research. You'd probably have to, uh, well, I don't wanna say, I was, I was thinking, a percent of the square foot available, instead of the trip generation, because without having an idea of what type of business you're gonna have. I mean, you could have a large structure in here, but only generate, you know, three or four trips a day, based on what it is, so... Let's, let's do a little research, and we can get back to you on that particular one.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, I've, I've been on the commission since, uh, fall of, of twenty-ten. And every time we come across this, talking about turning lanes, it's always brought up about TDOT. TDOT hasn't recommended a turning lane yet, since I've been sitting on here. TDOT bases all their information on today, not the future. And when I signed up for being on the Planning Commission, I thought we did planning. Not for just today, we've gotta look at what's out there and going that way. And I think, as a commission, uh, I would like to see the staff sort of come up with something for this commission to base some of these turning lanes on. Cause we sit here and discuss this all the time, and we really don't have anything concrete to base what a turning lane, what requires a turning lane, what we need for a turning lane, cause every time, uh, whether it's a subway, or a Dollar General, or whatever, we go through this argument. And, and we talk about escrow, putting money in escrow, well, we just had one where the gentleman had money sitting there on a bond, and we just took it off. And, and that, that store is still sitting there in a curve, and it's still heavy traffic in that area, and it's not, uh... If an accident is gonna happen there, it's when an accident's gonna happen. We just got through with one out there at Last Cassis, there's three, as you mentioned here, there's three businesses there right now. One of them happens to be the convenience center, where people are coming in there with trailers loaded to the, to the gills with stuff, on trailers that probably have not moved, maybe once a year, to haul off trash to get there. And individuals who are not looking, or whatever, and then you add another business there, you know, we, we can't keep basing these things on our feeling, or whatever. And I hope that maybe we can get staff to sit down and see what other counties are doing, if there's something out there concrete that maybe we, as a county, can be basing some of this on, and coming up with some, some concrete things to look at, where we can tell somebody that's getting ready to go in here and do these businesses, hey, if you're gonna be doing this, this is something here in Rutherford County we're gonna require.
I've got one more question for the gentleman. Um, the, is there any type of substance that's going inside of the, um, Aqua Shield? Cause I see these bags of, um, this stuff right here, blue, yellow bags of substance here. Is that going inside to kinda break up the chemicals, the, uh, stormwater that's going inside?
Not in this unit, there's no filter or any type of material.
Okay, I just didn't know what that was. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, that little picture they got.
Thank you.
Well, I do agree we need to have some hard and fast rules on turn lanes, I think we need to have a set of rules we can do evenly, and, you know, consecutively with everybody, and, and they oughta be able to know when they walk in the door to planning what's gonna be required. And, uh, we are where we are with this one, I mean, it's ready to be approved, and, uh, and, and I think we've already said during the zoning phase, we were looking at the turn lane more when we did the, uh, convenience stores, if, if and when it came to pass, which could be in six months or twenty years, nobody knows, so... Would that all make a motion to approve contingent upon all staff comments?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Doug, we, we're gonna vote to approve this, and there were numerous concerns, things to still be done? Are we, are we approving prematurely?
No, I, I would just approve subject to staff comments, and, again, the, the, the biggest issue as far as I was concerned, you know, from a planning standpoint, was the, the buffer area on that north side, which we can work with the applicant on. I don't think that's something we need to defer action on.
This motion was with staff comments, so
I think that, that's fine.
Concerns that you mentioned would be, um, would be handled by staff
That's correct.
Before they begin the building process?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, standing. Before we leave, uh, that discussion, turning lanes, and further discussion as far as policies on turning lanes, where is that best handled?
Well, I think from a sta, you're talking from a staff standpoint, let us take a look at that. We can sit down with our engineering staff, and, and as the suggestion was, try to look, maybe look at some other counties around here, see what they do. I know in the past, we've talked about this, I know at one point, we had brought, uh, TDOT's, uh, recommended, um, standards as far as turn lanes, when they require them and when they don't. Of course, I think that was really more looking at project-specific type situations, as opposed to looking at a larger area. But let us take a look at that, at a little more detail.
Thank you, and, and we're, we're going to, um, maybe bring back a report in a month or, or so, as to what we found out, and where we'll be working on that, and when we'll be working on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Is that okay with everyone? Item number nine, um, under other business, I think we've had an additional plat that
Yes, sir.
You want to discuss, Doug?
Yes, there's a, if we could have a suspension of the rules to allow a final plat, it's just an amendment, it's, it's pretty straightforward. You should have a, a copy of that on your tables, but I think...
Break the motion.
A motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is the Sterling Ridge subdivision off of Allen Road, uh, off of Leanna Road, in that area of the county. Uh, you'll probably recall seeing this several months back, it's just a three-lot plat. Really what has happened is Lot Six has made a change to their, or is proposing to make a change to their lot line, which will affect Lot Twelve. It's not shown so much on, on this, the Lot Twelve, this is reflecting where the new lot line would be. But since this plat hasn't been recorded yet, and this is a change to the plat, we just felt it'd be better to bring it back for, for your approval, as opposed to, to not. So, really, that, that's the only change, everything else about it's the same. Just wanted to have your approval on the, on the change that was made.
Just made Lot Six a little larger, and Lot Twelve a little smaller?
I believe that's right, yes.
Any questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Staff reports?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, just, uh, one item, uh, to discuss, uh, and just a, a little more detail here. Uh, as part of your requirement, or part of your requirements for being a planning commission, you know, public chapter eight sixty-two requires that we have, planning commissioners have four hours of training every calendar year. Uh, as staff, we've been, uh, kinda playing with some ideas, as far as, uh, providing some, some training opportunities for you. Uh, something that we've been, uh, thinking about is do something, kinda have a, I, I don't necessarily call it a panel discussion or anything like that, but, uh, kind of a, where we just have folks from the, the county, different agencies in the county, to come and talk to the planning commission about their roles and responsibilities, and how maybe the planning commission can work with them more effectively. Some of the things we were looking at are possibly speakers from the Farm Bureau, maybe someone from the Chamber of Commerce, someone from the School Board, uh, possibly someone from the Nashville MPO, to, to speak on, uh, the, the role of the localities and regional plans, those kind of things. Uh, we've had, uh, just, uh, kind of, just brainstorming amongst staff, just come up with several of, of ideas like that. We even talked about maybe having municipalities, you know, contributing to this as well. But I think kinda what we were thinking, at least at this point, is maybe if you all had any ideas, as possibilities, uh, kinda what are, we envisioned would be giving each person who would speak, maybe like twenty minutes or so to a half hour. We try to do one four-hour block, in order to get, uh, those people that still need training, to, to be able to do one session, and then be done. Uh, at this point, we're kinda looking at, we don't have a date necessarily set, but we're kinda looking in the autumn sometime, uh, probably starting around lunchtime, and then just going through the afternoon, as opposed to something early in the morning. But, I, and I guess some of our questions that we have are, first of all, do you have any ideas, something that you would like to see a presentation on? And second, is there a day that's better or worse for, for you who are here? Uh, you know, obviously, we'll, we'll try to schedule it around as, as many people as we can, but eventually, we may just have to pick a date and say, hey, if you can make it, great, if not, we have other options. So, that's just really for, uh, discussion purposes, you don't have to give me an answer right now, but it's something that we are trying to, to put together here, uh, again, it's just part of our yearly, uh, training requirements, so... I'd be happy to entertain any ideas.
Would the discussion on turning lanes, that kind of thing, cover that?
Yeah, that, that would, that would count.
There's one, there's one right there. Gentleman, right there.
Any other kind of ideas, or anything? And again, this is really more, I mean, this is kind of, since we're bringing this on our other business, obviously, we didn't have this on the agenda necessarily, but if, uh, I would just, you know, encourage you over the next couple of weeks, if you can think of some ideas, or, again, if you just let us know what days and times are generally good for you. Uh, again, we're, we're gonna try shoot for the afternoon, but if there's a day where half the planning commission's gonna be out on a particular day, we just won't use that, we'll try to schedule it where we can get as many people as we can, so...
Maybe even a further discussion, something new, like what we've talked about today on stormwater, uh, the newer process, just a little bit further explanation on that, and, and, uh, what we've done about it, and what we're gonna continue to do about it. Uh, there were still some questions, I think, that, uh, were unanswered, so, something like that, bringing another, another discussion, and an educational process. Couple of years ago, Dale did, um, I don't know, an hour or more, uh, training, so, just update us, I think, on where we are with stormwater, and what we have looking at us now, and then what we have looking at us in the future. Something like that, I think, would be, uh, really appropriate, too, because it's not gonna go away, and it's going to be, uh, once again, a mandate, uh, that we do these kind of things, so... We'd just like to better, I think, understand what we're facing right now, and then maybe what you guys foresee in the future, that we'll have to be doing, too. Something like that?
Okay.
That make sense?
We also, uh, you know, with the new census data coming out, we thought about doing a, you know, a presentation on, you know, just different trends that we've been seeing, just using the census data from two thousand to two thousand and ten. You know, no real topic necessarily, and in mind right now, just some general topics, and maybe things that we thought you might be interested. We have very capable, uh, mapping staff that can come up with some very good-looking maps, so...
Have you thought about breaking it up into different days? And in other words, you know, like, in my case, or in the afternoons, it's easier to give you, you know, four and one hour, or two, two-hour days than it is...
I, I mean, at this point, uh, it, it's really whatever the planning commission would be more comfortable with. We were thinking, just do one four-hour block, just to get it out of the way, but if it'd be better for you to do, maybe two, two-hour sessions, or something like, I mean, we're open to whatever, that's, that's fine, so...
We'll, we'll think about it. Uh, it could even be that, uh, there's some that'd rather have, get it all over with, and be done with it, and then there's others that may wanna spread it out a little bit. If we have topics that we could cover, and consider it training, we could cover it in an hour, a particular topic in an hour, we just may spread it out over a four-month period of time, and do it following this meeting.
Right, and we have until the end of the year, so we're, we're, we, we have time on our side at this point.
We could do that similar to what we've been doing with our, our work sessions, and, and, uh, kinda get it out of the way like that, and maybe not be so, quite so intrusive
Yeah, that, that would certainly work, yes, sir.
I think one, one other thing, Mr. Chairman, that, that, since we, we, we took on step systems a long time ago, and this, this body has changed a lot since then, it's probably a lot, just really, we talk about step systems a lot, just really don't understand how a step system works. We get, we get somebody up here for thirty minutes on that, to, you know...
I think that's just great, it's just part of that whole, uh, process of how we're going to be planning for the future, just... We've been dealing with those things, I don't know how many years now, somebody help me, ten years?
Ms. Allen was county mayor when we took that over.
Ten years?
It started fourteen years, started a year ago.
So, we've been over ten years, and, and, uh, how those systems that have been in place for ten years are, are performing, and, and, uh, what the future of those kind of things look like. That's a good thought. All right. Any other questions? We'll come back, come back with, with some of those ideas, and if we have, uh, things that we can cover, like, uh, an hour at a time, we might spread that thing out, um, over a four-month period of time, like September, October, November, December, that kind of thing, and get it done with.
And that, that's certainly, that would work just as, as easily.
So, the people presenting, you'll have to kinda check with their schedules also?
That's right, yes, ma'am. Okay, that sounds good.
Work session?
Yes, sir, if you wanna adjourn the meeting first, then we can just go ahead and dive right in, so...
We have a motion to, uh, adjourn our regular meeting, uh, so we'll just consider ourselves adjourned, and, uh, reconvene immediately for our work session.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Before we start that, you guys, uh, Mr. Reed is not ostracized, um, he's down there in his regular place, it's just that all the other commissioners that are surrounding him are not in their regular place, and, and, uh, his comments on future planning is, uh, absolutely spot-on, and thank you for participating with this group over here, if that is your good man.
You may just consider this the amen corner, if you...
All right, well, well, thank you, let's go ahead and, and dive right in. Of course, the last few work sessions, you'll recall, we've been, uh, discussing our proposed draft regulations for mining, drilling, and quarrying setbacks. Uh, there are other regulations in that section, but really, most of the discussion has centered around the setbacks we've been using. Uh, I'm not gonna go in just a whole lot of detail about how we've got to where we are now, unless you just want me to, I can be more than happy to do that. But, uh, you recall at our last meeting, uh, we had some more discussion about that, uh, we, and we've, uh, planning commission asked us to, to look at some, uh, some possible changes to this, and made some recommendations to that effect. Uh, you'll see that our current regulations are, again, no excavation quarry wall or storage area, and let me clarify, so that's our current draft regulations. It shall be located within one mile of any school site, or fifty-hundred feet of any public rights-of-way, community assemblies, or residentially-zoned property, including, uh, approved PUDs. Uh, what we've done at this point is, you see, under our proposed draft regulations, we've kinda broken it down, uh, a little more. Uh, we've got our setbacks, again, being one mile from the property line of any community, existing community education activity, which would be any kind of a public or private school, fifteen-hundred feet to the property line of any existing community assembly activity, that would be any kind of religious facility, lodges, clubs, things like that. Existing healthcare activity, which really includes hospitals primarily, or existing residentially-zoned property, including residential portions of approved planned developments. Uh, we took another step down, a thousand feet from any properties which are zoned in the office and institutional districts, the commercial districts, and we also added special character districts in there. Now, that would be your nodes, basically, like your rural nodes, your, um, employment activity centers, and the neighborhood centers as well. And then three hundred feet from any other, from any properties, excuse me, zoned in the industrial districts, which would be heavy and light industrial, public roads, and rights-of-way. And also for the storage, uh, there would be nothing that could be stored within two hundred feet from any property line, with the exception of parking, fencing, offices, and weight scales, which would still be subject to all the other requirements of the ordinance. Uh, again, you'll see under that second, uh, well, I guess that's the third, uh, head, uh, line there, that also, we would still amend, uh, those couple of sections right there, uh, one being the land use activity table, and then a, a small change to the, uh, ordinance itself, which says the area that may be disturbed, once all applicable setbacks have been applied, that deals with the site plan. You know, basically, the site plan would have to show the areas that could be disturbed, uh, when they make their application. So, uh, I believe that this, uh, was going in a direction the planning commission wanted to go to, go into for this. So, at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions that, uh, you may have, or any other discussion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think most of the commission have received this, possibly about a week ago
Yes, sir, we, we emailed it out about a week or so.
And I think we've all read over this, and this is pretty much what we have. I'd like to go ahead and, and make a motion that we accept these regulations as been changed by the staff here with their amendments, and go ahead and make that a motion, and then as we discuss this, if there's changes to be made, we'll make those at that time.
I consider that a motion, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in, well, this, before we get into the vote, let's, let's do have, uh, discussion, but we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, pretty much what we talked about in Astasi and writing, uh, was this. And that was the purpose, so we could put it in the form of a motion, and, and move forward with it. So, discussion. in the form of a motion and move forward with it. So discussion.
Okay. Dale, where does the actual crusher sit in this scheme of feet?
On the site itself. Well, some of the crushers will be mobile, but in this, we haven't, we haven't actually delineated the location. That'd be up to the business itself where they locate the crusher.
Okay. Crushers will generate your dust, more or less. So should we not have it in one of these?
Well, the challenge you run into is, you know, if you generate the dust and there's no wind, you're okay at, you know, two hundred or three hundred feet. If you've got a real windy day, it could be quite a large distance from that. And so, you know, the challenge in just saying X is difficult when trying to deal with the dust particular part. Some of that stuff, you may get two or three miles from the site. So I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying it's really, it's going to be really difficult to pinpoint, you know, location X so that you don't get dust on your neighbors.
Okay. As our footage requirements are right now, it's two hundred feet for that, right?
Well, the two hundred feet here is for the storage.
Now, you could add that in there. Nothing shall be stored or any structures regarded to the process placed within two hundred feet. I mean, that would be an easy, that'd be something easy to put in there. Really, what we've been talking about throughout this whole discussion has been the location of the quarrying activity itself, as far as, you know, taking out the material, not so much.
And really, as Mike said, that's just a figure that we take out and go with because fifteen hundred feet, I live two miles from one, and it jars you. It does. If you're sitting on it, we're just picking out a number that we can't prove or disprove it. We can't and, I know a lot of people, they do, they are dusty at times. Like you say, if it's windy, but the state has requirements on the amount of dust too.
Right.
They're monitored on that. So I think the state does a pretty good job. But like you say, on a windy day, it's hard to control. It is hard to control. That's what I was thinking, if we moved, make sure the crushing part itself was a little bit further. And up to your discretion, what do you think? I know you can't just tell how, you know, the wind's blowing north, south, people on the south don't get it, people on the south get it when the north's blowing. So but it, dust, that's the, the shaking of the earth is not, I think, the big problem. I think it's the dust that's the problem.
And noise. And the noise.
Noise, yeah.
Again, the noise will depend upon if you've got a cloudy day or a clear day.
Concentrating on where the quarry is. I mean, they just take rocks. They shoot that once, once a week, once a month, whatever, and they take rocks out. And that's all it is. That's the
Right.
That's the, that's the simple part of it. It's the crushing is the part.
I'm just here and thinking, and it's just off the top of my head. I mean, when you're plowing a field as a farmer, and there's a real wind blowing, I mean, you're going to generate dust for a long ways. The same with this type of stuff. About the only way I think you could control how far the dust would blow is saying that you can't do the rock crushing if the wind is less, exceeds ten miles an hour, or said something like that. That'd be the only way, even if you put it, you know, quarter mile away from the nearest neighbor and you've got a real strong wind, they're going to probably get dust on them. Dust is
It's a hard call.
It's a hard call. And it's a bad example, maybe a bad example, but when Mount St. Helens blew, I lived in Maryland, and a week later, we got dust from that explosion of my car in Maryland. The point is, the winds were blowing, the upper winds were blowing two hundred miles an hour, and it carried it that far. Dust is just, it's extremely difficult to, even the state's saying you can only have so many particulates per given area. On a windy day, you're probably going to exceed that.
But the state has rules, do they not, for noise and dust and things like that? I mean.
And they're the ones that actually monitor that.
Who is supposed to be involved in the day-to-day controlling of the operation out there? Are we supposed to be sending our codes guys out there, or is the state supposed to be?
The state controls it.
I'm not trying to pawn anything off. We've got too many bosses here, I'm afraid, you know.
The state controls it. Now, we do
For every shot.
You know, they control.
And you're right, the, there may not necessarily be a portable crusher, but the crushers do move.
Right.
Because the pit expands, and as it does, they'll sporadically rotate around the site. And we're gonna, if we say, well, the crusher itself has to be fifteen hundred feet, and then the pit has to be fifteen hundred feet, we're making even more and more impossible for somebody to run a business out there. So I don't mean to disrespect anybody that lives in the proximity to a crusher at all. But we've been beating this up for half a dozen meetings now. We've got a whole state, some department down there that oversees this. I mean, I tend to think we pass this as presented and let the state deal with that. We could be, we could get into all different sorts of things. So trucks coming out of there, and how much dust is off them, or how loud they are, the mufflers on the trucks. And there's a whole lot of issues we could get involved in, and I think the state handles the majority of that.
What's going to happen in the future is really something that we're just kind of planning for, potential. But the quarries that are out there now will still operate just like they have been.
Right.
So we're not going to be able to help that situation. But we can help what's going on in the future. And that's part of the reason that they have to come to us and get approval to do that. And I think we will probably have some flexibility in the future. Once again, it's been more years than I've been involved in this process since that, since something has been approved. So I do think that we have some opportunities to even improve this process if need be in the future, if things change. So let's remember that what's out there right now is still going to operate, probably a lot like they have been in the past, unless the state makes some change somehow, some way. But we can look out for the future, and that's what we're trying to do right here. Other discussion? Good points, always has been. Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
One pass.
Motion carries. It's appropriate for us to do a motion in a work session, right?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's perfectly fine. I mean, all we're doing, just for someone who may be watching this on TV or for the, I think, Mr. Roden's here. I mean, all we've done is recommended that this is the draft we go with for the whole draft of the zoning. Now, I guess our next step is, that was, as far as we're concerned, I think that was really the last issue that the planning commission had asked us to look into. So moving forward from this point, we still have adequate time to, you know, advertise for our next public hearing, if that's what the planning commission would like to do for our August meeting, our August night meeting. But I guess I'll leave that up to you for discussion.
That next meeting, I think, is three weeks away?
I believe that's correct.
On August the thirteenth? At least that's what's on my calendar, August the thirteenth.
Yes, sir. August thirteenth, that's right.
So that would be three weeks away?
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of the timeline that we discussed is for a public hearing. And that's what I would recommend as chairman, unless someone has a problem with that. We'll advertise the public hearing for our six PM on Monday, August the thirteenth meeting.
Okay, sounds good. And we'll also, now that we think we've handled these issues, we'll go ahead and get the revised draft on our website. I know Ms. Emesley's been already working hard in that direction, so these final changes probably won't take very long, so we should be able to have it on our website very quickly.
It might be a good idea, Doug, just to kind of review the changes that we've made as a result of all of the public hearings we've had over the last six, eight months.
Yes, sir.
And just present those before we have the public hearing, and public hearings as a prelude to the public hearings.
Yes, sir. We can certainly do that. Be happy to.
Then we'll open it up to the public, okay?
That sounds good.
Doug, did you say you were going to give us a final printed version with all the changes? Because we'd had so many different versions before.
Yeah, we can do that. Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm just better about turning pages and processing information.
Yeah, and that's fine. And I mean, we'll put it out there for everybody. If you'd like to have another printed copy, we'll be happy to do it. I know there's some that are a little more tech savvy. I know Mr. Reed, I know you've got your iPad. If you just want a, if you just want a digital copy, just let us know. We won't print copies if people don't want them. But obviously, if you do, we'll be more than happy to do that. So just let us know how you prefer it, and we can do that.
It might be good to have those, several of those changes that we've made copies for the public.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we can, we'll do that. We'll make sure that's
Public hearing that we have on the thirteenth as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir. I have nothing further. Mr. Corbin, I don't know if you have anything?
Anything else? We be adjourned.